Good evening, everyone. Welcome to Eustace City Hall. This is a regular city commission meeting of the Eustace City Commission. It is 6:00 PM, Thursday, September the 7th, 2023. At this time, we're going to have a prayer by Pastor King with St. James, and then we also, Gary, if you'll lead us in the pledge. If you'd like to join us, please stand.
Let us pray. Our Father and our God, we bless your name. We give you glory and we give you praise. We do the cloud that you and you alone are worthy of all of our praises. We pause now to say thank you for being our God and allowing us to be your children. And because we have that kind of relationship with you, we can always come to you and make our requests known. But before we ask you for anything in this commission meeting this evening, we want to say thank you for everything. You brought us through another storm. You made ways out of no ways for us. For that, we say thank you. Now, God, we thank you for the leadership of this city. We ask you, God, to continue to crown their head with wisdom and knowledge that they might continue to lead the people of this city in the way that would bring glory and honor to your name. Bless this meeting this evening, God, and allow everything that's going to be said, every decision that's going to be made, to bring glory and honor to you. In Jesus' name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. Is there a court present? Proper notice been given?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Next, we have an agenda update. Tom, any?
Yes, sir. If it's okay with the commission, I'd like to move item 6.3 up to be the first item under ordinances, public hearings, and quasi-adjudicial hearings. So I'd like to take resolution number 2379 and make it the first item under number six.
That's fine. Thank you so much. All right. Next, we have approval of minutes. We have our approval of minutes from our July, the 11th, 2023 City Commission Budget Workshop and our August 17th, 2023 City Commission meeting, looking for a motion for approval.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Ashcraft.
Aye.
Commissioner Cobb. Commissioner Hawkins.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lee.
Aye.
Mayor Holland.
Aye. Next, we have presentations. We have the Dolly Parton Imagination Library of Lake County, Florida. There she is. How are you tonight?
Doing great. How are you?
Doing great.
Thank you for the opportunity to present in front of you. I have a, here it is. Good. Okay. So, so the Dolly Parton Imagination Library is just newly starting in Lake County as of about six weeks ago. The program itself is, where do I hit this? There we go. Thank you. So, in order to get it started, we had to have a 501(c)(3), so I started the Triangle Community Alliance, serving all of Lake County. I don't know where to hit it. Okay. So, go back one, please. So, the why and how of Lake County. One more. Go forward. Okay. So, I thought it was very interesting to have the milestone in June that Dolly Parton had sent out her 200-millionth book since 1995. So, we're all real proud of that. Be doing some media exposure on that. Next, please. So, according to the 2020 census of Lake County, it appeared that third graders were under grade-level reading. So, I thought that would be a really good thing to note. The way that the monies are formulated is that the Dolly Parton Imagination Library has a matrix, taking the number of children under five, multiplying it by a couple of different percentages. And the only stipulation that the Dollywood Foundation has is that the children must live in the ZIP code that's being funded. The ZIP code needs to be funded, and they would like to know where the monies are coming from, from year two and three and so on and so forth. Next, please. So, how does it help our children? Well, the children actually receive a free book once a month mailed to the ZIP code that's funded. The books are designated in various ages, zero to one years of age, one to two, two to three, and so on. Each year getting a little bit more difficult. The books are wrapped and addressed and mailed to the children at their home. So, if the parent or guardian has some difficulty getting to the library or other sources, they at least have age-appropriate and imagination-stimulating books mailed to the home. So, based on some numbers that I have, there would be 350 Eustace children, if we got them all. They would be receiving 4,200 books the first year. I think that's pretty amazing. So, it starts off with the first book of Welcome and The Little Engine That Could. So, it's I Think I Can, I Think I Can. You're familiar with that book. And it ends at five years of age when they graduate from the program with a book that is titled Lookout Kindergarten: Here I Come. So, the way the numbers work, if you would look, Eustace has two ZIP codes. And just take an example, take the top one or the second one, for example, total population and ZIP code 736, has 510 children under five. Moving to the right, in year one, after a number of matrix, you multiply 65% times 510, and then 30% of that for your first year, come up with 99 children. And so, 99 children. It would be 199 children year two, year three, four, and five. So, that's pretty exciting. Next page. And so, the way that it works, you start with raising funds, which is what I did, opened up the Triangle Community Alliance, start enrolling the children. Dolly, and that goes up electronically to Dollywood Foundation. They process the orders. They've already purchased the books and begun to wrap the books, and they print the labels and put them on the wrappers, mail them out, and typically 10 days after the mail hits the designated area, we get an electronic bill. However, I wanted to prepay that for a year for Taverries, which is the only ZIP code currently eligible. So, I did that, and every month I don't have to worry about it. It's also a cost savings. Even though it's an ACH that they draft from, from the accounts, it's still a $25 fee. So, you save $300 a year, and I'd rather put that into the children's books.
Yeah.
So, the Triangle Community Alliance, you know, we need to have a board. We're not-for-profit. I'll probably always be looking for board members who have it in their heart for literacy for children, and advisory committee members who may not be able to full-time fundraise as board members but want to contribute, people who want to advocate and have sustainable funding ideas, recruit other community sponsors and champions. I'm thinking that Eustace may have some money to help fund the children, but maybe we could work and brainstorm. Maybe the Kiwanis could kick in a little bit, maybe some other groups could kind of kick in, and we could have a collaboration and get it up pretty quick. I don't have a website yet because I wanted the money to go right into the children's books, but I think somebody will eventually step up and offer some in-kind services and hosting. And then, of course, we're going to capitalize on social media and marketing. So, I'd like you to connect with me. Here's my PO box, my home phone number up there. We have Gmail. I was so excited. I forgot I should have put it dot org. So, I'm going to be changing that. Right now, I've started the first month, just so you know, you don't start off with that many children. So, I started off in Taverries, and for two weeks, and I went and found 18 children. Then I went to meet the teacher at the Taverries Elementary School, and I had about 43 children sign up. So, the second month, I had 63 children. I just ended up putting that number in, and I already have about six for September. So, the children I signed up in July are going to get their books in September. It's a six-to-eight week cycle, depending on when in the month they were enrolled and when they close the month. The children that were enrolled in August are going to get those in October, and then we're coming up for the September children to get them in November. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Does anyone have any questions?
What's your, what do you think your monthly budget will be?
Well, it's really kind of up to you. You know, if we pick one, if we pick one or both ZIP codes, we could, we could top it out at 50 children, for example, on a pilot program for 50 children each ZIP code for one year, and see how fast that fills up. You take those 50 children, and you multiply that by $32 per child, and that would be your budget for the year. So, once again, to stay up with that monthly, because I'm going to have about 21 cities, it's not much money. So, I just paid it directly to Dollywood Foundation, which runs the whole organization, and then they debit from that on-account money. If anything should happen and we don't continue to go forward, then the money would be completely refunded, those monies that are not used. But I wanted the savings of the $300 from the ACH.
Do you have the ability to, if someone wants to support you monthly, do you have the ability to do that?
Not for enrolling the children. I think we need a substantial nest egg to get started. But we would need ongoing donations, and I think where some of the volunteers would come in, like when you have the car show, we come up here for the car show and bring a car. You know, I have a tablecloth. We could set it up and have a jar for donations. But I can't do all the car shows, so I would need some local assistance to maybe show some of the sample books and collect any cash monies. Any cash monies, we could designate strictly for the Eustace Fund, and you would have a ledger column in our bookkeeping system, or you could gather your own money and then give me a check for the amount, let's say, for a year, or even six months. But we want to know where the full year's money is and where the second year's money is coming from. Because what we definitely don't want to do is start the program, get everybody happy, and then disappoint the families.
Well, you could also put a donation button right on the website. Donate now.
Yes. There's a donate, I'm going to do that on my local website, and there's also a donate button on the Dolly Parton website. So, you could donate directly into my affiliate number, which is 3295. And then, if whoever would be in contact with me could say, I really wanted that money to go for Eustace children, and that kind of thing. So, we can make it, you know, specific to you all. But overall, I'm going to have some expenses that go to all the cities, like the copying and print and stuff like that. Do you have any other questions? So, if I may ask, if you were interested in moving ahead, how might that look in the future?
I think what I would like to do is have each commissioner correspond with Tom, and Tom can reach back out to you, and we'll put together what we need to put together.
Okay. Thank you so much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you for being with us. Appreciate it.
Good night.
Next, on the agenda, we have Dark Sky's presentation.
Are you doing that? Great.
Pretty good. Good evening, Council. I'm Marty Proctor. I'm your local Dark Sky Advocate. I live in Groveland. I've been a Dark Sky Advocate for several years. We were involved in the start of Dark Sky in Groveland, and I'm really grateful to have an opportunity to talk to you as one of the many cities in Lake County. Our goal is to get the forward progress and have all the cities adopt Dark Sky ordinances that are legal and enforceable. So, this is what light pollution looks like over the last 70 years, since 1950. It's increasing by 2% a year, every year. Doesn't sound like a lot, but as you can see, compounded over the years, it's made a significant difference in the availability of dark skies to everybody. The key here is, it's easy to imagine when you look at this map as it progresses through the years, a time when there will be no natural darkness for the vast majority of people. It's already 80% of the people don't have the dark skies. And the other key for you here is that you're on the edge of a light desert. There's a light desert that's behind us, right behind our backs here in Lake County called Orlando. It's already swallowed Winter Garden. It's already swallowed Apopka. I don't know what we can do about those. It's not, that's not part of this process. But what we can do is protect the edge where we are here. So, the problem is light pollution. There are solutions, though. By better fixture design, there's a modern lighting control, which we'll talk about briefly, and proper color selection, which we'll talk about briefly, can help solve the light pollution problem and make it so that it doesn't get worse in this area. There's three main types of light pollution, which we'll cover now. It's glow, glare, and trespass. So, this is a picture of the night sky outside of Tucson, Arizona. Tucson's on the right in this picture. You'll notice that you can't see any stars because the sky glow from the city on the left, in the same frame, same picture, you can actually see the Milky Way, even though there's pictures, or excuse me, but lights in the front of that, in the front of that picture. So, this is why it's so vital that we work on the edge here. The next type of problem we have with light pollution is glare. And glare, I'm sure we've all been driving down the road and been blinded by oncoming cars with modern LED lights for their headlights. And we've also been driving down the road and/or maybe walking and seeing a business where they have an excess amount of lights that are aiming out, and you get blinded by those lights. Now, okay, some of that's because we're getting older, but it's not all because we're getting older. It's a fact of the technology of LED lighting. It's a very specific source for the light, and as a result, it affects your eyes by sending low-angle light directly into your eyes, and your pupils react to that, and it changes the dynamic of your vision. So, it isn't just old age, although I gotta admit, some of it is. The other is light trespass. I hope that you've never been kept awake by a neighbor's new light that they just put up recently that blasted your bedroom in the middle of the night, or across the lake, or across the road, or wherever. The problem with light trespasses is it makes bad neighbors, makes bad neighbor relationships, and that affects your quality of life in your city on an everyday basis. And the most, the most sad thing about this is, is that the majority of the time, people are just doing it out of ignorance. It's just a lack of awareness. They don't realize when they do this that they're affecting their neighbors. And guess who? I did it myself. I didn't even realize. I replaced 300 watts of lighting on my driveway with 10 watts of LED. But no, I went ahead and put 20 up. I said, you know, 20's better than 10. I'm going from 300 down to 20. What a big win this is. And then I looked at the color. 3,000 K was 8,000 lumens. 6,000 K was 10,000 lumens. I'm like, well, it's more lumens. It's more light. It's got to be better. So, I did all the wrong things. I put up too much light, and I put up the wrong color. But in my fairness, in fairness to me, it does have a motion sensor on it, so it goes on for a minute, and then it goes off. So, but I inadvertently blasted my neighbors, too. So, don't think it's a bad thing. It's just ignorance. We just don't know. The other real challenge from your perspective, if you'll forgive me, is streetlights. LED-based streetlights that are not properly designed are one of the leading causes of light trespass, where it just blows up people's yards. And effectively, there's nothing as a resident that you can do except put up blackout curtains. The other thing that gets affected by dark sky, loss of dark sky and night lighting, is nature. And it essentially affects all parts of nature. I just covered three of them. Trees will bud earlier, and they'll hold their leaves longer, which, okay, it makes for ugly trees, but it also affects pollinators because they're all scheduled and into season with when the trees and when the plants and when the flowers pollinate, so that their breeding season and their hatchery season coincides with when that food's available. You mess up that cycle, you mess up the pollinators, you mess up food production. Birds migrate at night by starlight. I had no idea that that happened. I just figured they flew in the day. You know, they fly, they fly up 95 or 65 or 75, and they get to where they're going. No, they fly by starlight at night. So, the dark sky messes up bird migrations. And insects, this we've all seen. Insects are attracted to the light, which is bad enough. But the problem is, is that also their predators get attracted to the light. It concentrates the animals, and it makes them more vulnerable, and it also makes them, they get hypnotized. And they'll actually try to fly away from it, but they can't because all they do is, because it's a point source, as they're trying to fly away, they just end up flying in a circle with their back to the light. Biggest, most common myth about lighting is that more lighting is safer. I want you to realize that these two pictures are the same picture. The bad guy, if you want to call him that, actually isn't all right guy, in the picture on the bottom is standing there in the picture on the top. Groveland did exactly the same thing. They built a brand-new, beautiful park, built a bathroom, put a massive LED light at the front of the bathroom, and you couldn't see anything except right there. You could stand right next to the building, and no one would know you were there because the glare was so bright that obviously they changed the light, they rearranged it. But the reality is, is that more is not safer. So, that, and the other thing, modern lighting control, LED lights are modern. They're designed today. They have the ability to have dusk-to-dawn lights, which is very common. That's old. That's been around a long time. Streetlights are all that way. But they also have the ability to have timers and motion sensors built into them. So, when your police, for example, if you were looking at Farron Park, the park could be all dark, and the police drive by, everything's cool. But as soon as one of the lights goes on, they're alerted to the fact that something is moving inside that park. So, they would be able to pay more attention to that area where something's moving, instead of maybe having to patrol the whole park. It's a large park. So, just as a thought on that, it's not hard in modern lighting to put motion sensors, dusk-to-dawn controls, and also dimmers, so that after two hours after dark, it drops to 70%, and four hours after dark, after everybody's in bed, maybe it drops to 30 or zero and turns off. Saves you energy, too, but the key here is the improvement in security. So, what are the solutions? The solutions are here. Shielding is the first and most obvious one, so that you can't physically see that bright, that sun pointing at you. It's like a flashlight. If I aim a flashlight at your eyes, you can't see. But if you, if I hold the flashlight like a lantern, you can see what I'm lighting up. Same thing with shielding. It's easy to do. All the designers are doing it. You just have to specify it. Color, temperature. More yellow is good. Blue is bad. White is made out of blue, and therefore, it transmits further into the atmosphere, like 10 times further into the atmosphere than yellow. In the old days, chemistry drove the colors. Metal halide, sodium vapor, mercury vapor, and halogen controlled the color. Now, the LED manufacturer controls the color. Again, they don't care. They'll make a 6,000, a 5,000, a 4,000, or a more comfortable 3,000. They're perfectly happy to make 3,000 for you. The intensity, again, I made the mistake. I didn't need 20 watts of LED light in my driveway. 10 was plenty. So, you just, you have to, realize that you're saving money, saving energy, but don't get caught up in that. Put the amount of light down that you need to put down. And finally, again, timing, intelligence, motion sensors, things like Where do you find dark sky lighting? When we started the process in 2017 in Groveland, we touched base with Duke and CECO. Neither one had products available for night sky, for skylights, for parking lot lights, for any public area lighting. They both responded, Duke responded very quickly, and CECO's responding, and they now have product available that your contractors and your developers and your, and your commercial developers will be able to go to the utility and request parking lot lights and streetlights that are dark sky compliant. What can we do as people? That's simple. Go to your home improvement store. Your favorite one is. Go to Local Ace Hardware. Go to Carter's. Go to, go to Amazon. And what you'll find is these dark sky-approved symbols on the lights that are dark sky compliant, and they will meet all of the requirements, the color, the shielding, and all of that. So, finally, the ordinance was created by Groveland. They actually wrote it. It's in their code. It's been, it's been approved. It's been proven to be legal, and it's enforceable. The biggest change is that today, when a development is finished, their code enforcement people have a legitimate document that they can go out and checkmark when they look at a developer's lighting, or a homeowner, a residential lighting scheme, and verify that it is compliant. Everybody says, oh, no, we're going to do dark sky lighting. Honest we will. Sure, we will. You know, we're going to do it. That's great, but it does not give your code enforcement people anything to grade that by or judge that by. The standard that's been created, Dark Sky has their own, Groveland has theirs. It's in your, it's in your agenda pack. They'll be happy to, I'd be happy to get you another copy of it if you want. Then there's some things that we didn't expect to happen. Buzz. I never expected this. This is the front page of the Orlando Sentinel on a Sunday. It's a story highlighting Groveland's approval as a dark sky community. Happens to have my picture on it, too, which I like. It makes it kind of, it's a silly picture, but nonetheless. Saturday, a week later, similar, similar picture, same thing, Groveland Dark Sky Community. This is the Orlando Sentinel, Tampa Tribune, Sarasota Paper, Jacksonville Paper. I think all of the major news networks and all the news channels have picked it up. So, we didn't expect that. But it's been a great buzz, and it's been a great builder for the name of the city and the credit of the city. Again, the thing I want to leave each of you with, I live on the edge of the wild. Where I live in Groveland, it's the last stop. Across my lake is miles of swamp and marshland and empty space. It's dark. It's wonderful, and we're working to keep it that way here. Each and every one of you has the same luxury here. When you look to the west from Eustace, you look across the lake, there's a lot of public land over there. A lot of it's water authority land. Public land is dark. You have dark sky to the west. You look to the north, you have the bustling metropolis of Umatilla and Astor, far, far away, and Paisley. They're not contributing greatly to the dark sky light pollution problem. So, you have the opportunity, and your unique opportunity in my mind, in your city, to be the line where the dark sky starts and the light desert ends. So, I'm available now. I'm available anytime to you because, again, this is what I do. It's one of my favorite hobbies. If you, is there anything you'd like to ask now?
Any questions from the commission?
I do.
Please.
Two. When, I know Groveland created the ordinance. So, is there a program that Groveland has moving forward? I know it's for current developments coming up, that they're having them do this. But what about previous developments? Has Groveland created a program that can help, I guess, the old developer, or if now it's an HOA, if you will, to change those lights out on the street lighting? You know, what kind of money does that look like?
It's a really good question, and the answer is twofold. First off is that they're not specifically funding any of this, but they do have it written into the, into the, there's a timeline written into the ordinance. It's five years for commercial and 10 years for residential. The reality of The reality of current lighting technologies is, whether it's halogen, metal halide, whatever it is, it has a life cycle of five to ten years. These lights are going to go out, they are going to fail in that five to ten year period. And when they're replaced, they will have to be compliant with the ordinance. And that is written specifically into the ordinance. However, there's no hammer. You know, it doesn't say, five years, one day and one minute from now, we're gonna come and knock on your door and force you, it's not like that at all, it's a goal.
And what's the cost of the lighting compared to just a LED, or, because LEDs aren't cheap. So what's that cost compared to an LED?
It's another really good question. I don't know the exact specific answer, but the answer is, in general, the fixture itself and the cost of the light body, the light engine, the machine, because it's not a bulb anymore, is really small compared to the cost of installation, the cost of pole, and the cost of the rest of it. So whether you put a metal halide or a LED fixture up, it's a real, very small incremental cost compared to the cost of putting up a street light or a parking lot light or a bollard or whatever.
And so does Duke have those lights readily available for, let's just say, up and down Bay and Grove, nineteen?
They do. They do. And FDOT has them as well, and they put them on the Howie Bridge. If you notice, they all turn purple.
They're purple.
Yeah, that's an epic fail, just so you know, it wasn't done because it's cool or pretty. It was an epic fail, the manufacturer had a bobble. One of the largest manufacturers of LED light engines in the entire planet had an engineering bobble. And they, but they've gone through and replaced them all. So, the answer is, at DOT level, yes. At residential and city and commercial level, yes.
And has the county, for lack of a better term, bought into this? Have you done this presentation with Lake County?
I've spoken to all five of the county commissioners, but the reality of it is, I have not presented because candidly, I think it's more important at this level. I don't think the county has the kind of movement and growth and energy that's going on here in Eustis and in Groveland and in Mascot and in Claremont and in Mineola and in Mount Dora. It's, this is, you're a more important audience to me than the five of them are right now. Because their footprint is getting smaller. I think it's about to get smaller here in about a half an hour or two. So their footprint gets smaller every day, your footprint gets bigger. Not every day, but your footprint continues to grow. And yours is a growth footprint, and that's where I think, I personally believe you're the most important audience that I have for this presentation. I'll get them second, or fourteenth, as the case may be.
Anybody else?
Don't hesitate. Email me, whatever. This is my favorite thing to do.
Thank you. Next we have Carver Park Basketball Shade Structure. Craig.
Good evening. Craig Dolan, Parks and Recreation Director. This is about adding a shade structure to Carver Park to give us a covered basketball court. This is our aerial view. Currently, we have three courts out there. They all are lighted. Two of them that are highlighted where we put the shade structure. We have one that's facing north-south, the other two are facing east-west. Just a little view heading towards Lake Willy, so you could see from the parking lot where the courts are. We do have lighting, again, we have lighting on all the courts. This is a conceptual design. The actual structure would be hundred by a hundred and thirty feet. So a hundred wide to cover both courts by a hundred and thirty feet. With a fourteen-foot eve, so you could walk under it, give enough height, and it would give us cover. And it would low enough that the sun, the glare, for most of the day would not get in there. Couple of examples I'm gonna show you next is what it would look like. This is over one court. This is out of Woodlands, Texas. These are three. As you can see on one of them, the bottom right, you can see that they've added solar to it. So it is high enough then, we could add solar panels later down the line, which then would cut down our electrical costs. So like I said, lighting can be added to the courts. It doesn't have to be, it all depends, but since we do have lighting, it's an easy transition to connect to the building. Two different types of fans. Humongous fans, they're great, and big ass fans. The top two large fans in the commercial area, they can go up to twenty feet wide, blades, which is great. Which would then cover our heating issue out there. Here's the biggest thing that we have going on. Everything's expensive these days, so we have two options. We can have a company just deliver the metal. And then we take care of everything else. So the metal alone, I found some quotes between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and thirty-five thousand. But that's it. That's just landed. So then we have everything else. One company quoted us at fifty-six thousand just to put the building up. And that was it. So then we had everything else. The engineering. We had the equipment, we had the permitting, we had the design. And talking with our Public Works Director, the big issue with that is, there's a risk on our end. So that if we're off a little bit, they're not changing the metal right on site. Then all the risk becomes ours and then our cost goes up. The other one is a company that does it all. Completes construction from start to finish, but it's three hundred and ninety thousand. But we currently don't have a basketball court recreational use in the city limits that we have use every day. We have local schools that we have started to partner with, but again, it's not all the time. And with how hot it is, even in September at ninety-five degrees today, it'd be nice to have to get out of the sun for a little bit. And that's it. Sure. Which one?
The one just before you said, that's it. So the top one. With metal alone, one twenty to one thirty-five, fifty-six thousand, what's the additional cost?
That's the site work, the engineering, the permitting, the electrical, that's everything else.
Okay, which includes, if we were to do it?
If we were to do it, it would cost us around two hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. That's us getting all the permitting, all the subcontractors, us being our own construction manager, unless we went with a construction manager at risk.
So, just to clarify, it's not the one twenty to one thirty-five?
That was the range. We got a couple of quotes in there.
But is the two fifty-one in addition to the one twenty?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, so we're creeping up on the three ninety.
You're at three eighty-six already.
Is the fifty-six?
That's on top of those two. So we're over four hundred if we go at our own.
Yep.
The three ninety includes everything.
Correct. This is what this company does. Fortunately, Ally was only to get one quote with that.
Any other questions?
Well, hey, what about the safety of the uprights?
Metal?
Yeah. Is there any chance?
We could wrap them in padding if we wanted to, so people aren't running into them.
I mean, have they been padded in other places?
Yes. Yeah, we have, I don't know if it's in the picture or not, it's not. So, you can wrap them. We just buy padding. We've wrapped our basketball poles right now currently with padding, so you can wrap these. So kids don't run into them.
What would be the lighting cost?
It's included in that one?
No. Electrical, you have to pay every month for it, right?
Correct. We're lighting our courts now from dusk till ten PM, so it'd be the same. So whatever our cost is now wouldn't change. The lighting out there is through Duke Energy, so they can actually just connect them to the structure.
Any other questions?
Something like padding, that's not included in the current cost.
No, and that's something we would add additionally.
Can we make that part in negotiations?
I could ask the company if they do the padding for it.
What kind of padding? What's that cost?
A few thousand, and it's not gonna be much. Because it's gonna be depending on how many posts we have around the structure. And then probably up eight feet, ten feet, it's not, it all depends on how high we want to put it.
So there's no other type of flooring?
No, it would just be the concrete. Yeah.
Would the fans be caged?
No, sir.
They can't, they're too big.
So that's the option. We don't have to add fans. It's just an added benefit, it's not needed, but...
If it's included, it just makes sense to do it.
Your estimate of three ninety includes lighting and fans?
Includes lighting and fans, yes. If not, we're down about three seventy to three seventy-five.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. All right, coming down now to audience to be heard. This is your opportunity. Tom, you got some cards there?
I do.
Robert Rude. Remember, you have three minutes at the microphone and please be civil.
Hello, my name's Robert Rude. I want to introduce myself to the commission and everyone, and mayor, vice mayor, city attorney. I recently moved here from Indiana to two oh one Sharp Circle. And I know you guys are familiar with them. We had a rather large meeting last night of all the residents of the park, in which I have all their signatures here. And it was brought to our attention that the city is fining the community and they're gonna pass through the cost to us. Now, they're telling us that they sent twelve emails to the attorney and to Mr. City Manager there, and that he wouldn't respond to any of them. And they offered to do over and above some recent code violations you said we've had. They say they have satisfied fifty-three of fifty-four violations. But they're accruing the costs. And according to what I've read on the stuff, if somebody comes at you and says, we'll fix this issue, but I then went to them and said, you don't have a good manager here, why don't you let me do it? I have two master's degrees, I can do this. So they gave me the job. So then I met your city guys that came out there. Eric told me he wasn't in a position where he could do, he couldn't tell me what to fix or what to do to make it right. And I told him, we wanted to repave the whole place and make it new in there. He said, I can't give you a permit for that. I said, why? Don't you want it nice here? He said, it's above my head. Well, there ain't very many people above his head. There's about one, two, and one more people than you guys, that's it. And we're just trying to figure out if we made a bad investment in your community. Or if, you know, because we know about the issue where you were trying to buy the property and you wanted to develop it with the waterfront. The owner told us that he sent twelve emails to your office and to Mr. Serrano, I don't know how you say your name, but but none of them were responded to. I have a letter here, if you guys would all like a copy of it, where we offered to do over and above the code enforcement. What they wanted us to do, we're gonna repave the whole streets and do everything underneath them. No, they said no. They just want to accrue fines, five hundred dollars a day. They don't want to see us fix it up. Well, we all invested in that place. I put, I've got fifty thousand dollars invested there. I didn't know there was an issue between the city and Sharp Circle. I bought it off of RE/MAX online, and then I get here and then now I'm the manager of the place. I've met Eric Martin three or four times. I've asked him, can you tell me what you want me to fix? No. It's almost like they will not, and there's no pending litigation in this matter. I mean, unless we file a lawsuit, which we have no intention of doing, if we can settle this. I mean, I have letters here, you all can read them. We made an offer April twenty-seventh.
We are in litigation with Sharp.
No, we're not.
You're welcome to check public records, and because of that, we're unable to comment on it.
See, that's what you're gonna hear, because they want to try to fine them till you guys can take the property from them.
We want to give you your opportunity to speak.
There's no, what's the case number? It's not a case number, it's a code violation. That's not a lawsuit.
You're welcome to check public records, sir.
I checked before I came.
Please have a seat, sir, thank you. Tom?
Jane Hepting.
Hi, Jane.
Is it all right if I use this mic?
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Jane Hepting and I live at two zero six Magnolia Circle in Eustis. This city is a great place to live, but it faces some big questions. Should we keep annexing land miles from our city center and authorizing developers to build high-density homes on it? Is that good for our economy and our environment? Must we race to annex land before another municipality snatches it up? There are several avenues to help us find the answers to these questions. First, I urge this commission to invite Strong Towns to help you with a cost-benefit analysis with regard to urban development occurring miles away from the city center. Let's find out if the upkeep for roads, water lines, fire hydrants, sewer lines, and the provision of other city services will strain taxpayers in the future. Let's find out how urban sprawl will affect traffic congestion. Strong Towns is willing to provide professional guidance to municipalities as part of its contract with Lake County. Second, I urge this commission and concerned Eustis citizens to attend the workshop to be presented by the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council in Taveries on November first, to learn how urban sprawl impacts our environment. Let's find out how important our trees, open spaces, and marshes are to air temperature, clean air and water, flood control, and biodiversity. Third, I urge this commission to invite the East Central Florida Regional Planning Council to meet with you to discuss amending this city's joint planning area agreements. This is needed to protect our open spaces from a land-grab frenzy. The following municipalities are in the process of amending their documents. Groveland, Mascot, Claremont, Taveries, Howie and the Hills, and Mineola. I urge Eustis to get on board too. If you need any contact information for Strong Towns or the Planning Council, please let me know. Thank you.
Brian Broomfield.
Evening, commissioners. Brian Broomfield, Eustis resident. On Saturday, August twenty-sixth, St. James AME Church hosted an event that we dubbed August Fest. This was the third event in the past few months where we have reached out to and/or partnered with the city in an attempt to bridge the gap between and strengthen relationships between the city and the community. I want to take this time to thank the members of the commission, the police and the fire departments and other organizations and agencies from around the county that took time out to enjoy some really good food and some really good fellowship. Best of all, it was free to anybody that decided to attend. Sadly, while we were enjoying the festivities, a racist, cowardly gunman in Jacksonville took the lives of three African-American citizens at a Dollar General store. Let us all be aware that the actions and words, or the lack of either, speak volumes to those who look up to our elected officials and community leaders. When leaders brush off an event that is earnestly intended to unite, what message are we sending? Commissioner Ashcraft, this is a personal and open invitation for you to join your colleagues at our next event. We put it on and we try to do everything as best we can. We all have our differences, but truth is truth and a lie is a lie. Domestic terrorism is terrorism. A suicide gunman is no different from a suicide bomber. Innocent people lose their lives, then the cowards take their own. Whether we're black, white, brown, Republican, Democrat, Conservative, Liberal, straight, LGBTQ, or whatever you choose, we all have a moral and a social responsibility to make every effort to work together and a godly command to love each other. Thank you for your time. And thank you for your attendance.
Pastor King.
Pastor, thank you for opening us in prayer tonight. I appreciate that, sir.
Reverend Richard King, pastor of St. James AME Church in the great city of Eustis. I simply came tonight to say thank you to our mayor, to the commissioners who were present, to Chief Capri, to the fire department, for being a part of our August Fest. What we had, again, good food, good fellowship, and a whole lot of fun. Your presence said to us that you care. And you have a desire to work with the entire community to make this city a better place to live, work, and conduct business. I look forward to working with you, all of you, in the days to come. I am a firm believer that together we can make a difference. Again, thank you.
Thank you, Pastor.
Eileen Fontaine.
Hello, I'm Eileen Fontaine. I live at seventy-two Shop Circle. And I just want to make a statement today. All I want to say is, I've noticed improvements in our community. I've noticed roads being patched, although if they were done over, it would be better for our handicap people. We still have a lot of handicapped that can't get around. We still have a lot of handicapped that can't get around potholes filled or whatever, but it would be better if it could be done over. But pipes are being fixed, poles have been fixed, electricity's been fixed. A lot of the problems we've been facing for months, we're now getting done, slow but sure. And we're a much happier group in there now. We do feel like a lot of things have been accomplished and we do feel like we should just tell you instead of complaining all the time what's not done, we're letting you know. I feel quite a bit has been accomplished and we feel much better for it. And I thank anybody and everybody that could help, and if you do help more, be even better. If you could cooperate with whatever you need us to do, we'll fix it, do it. We just wanna live there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Amy, Amy, how do you pronounce your last name?
Baker.
Baker. Sorry, I wasn't sure. I thought that was L.C.
At first I thought it was an R. I'm like, it's B.
Baker.
I think it's a B.
So I'm Amy Baker, obviously. I work, I live at 58 Sharp Circle. Again, I'm here really just 'cause I know none of you all can really comment. We're not part of the agenda today. So I'm aware that you guys can't comment on anything that I have to say, but just as Eileen did, I do wanna make a few statements. We did have this meeting last night with the owner. It's my first time in a year and a half I actually had the opportunity to meet Hansel Rodriguez. He came up from Miami himself. He spoke to us. He addressed a lot of the issues, the things that we wanted to, you know, speak to him about. He took responsibility for a lot of things that needed to be done, that could've been done sooner. He did take responsibility for it. But as Robert mentioned, as Eileen mentioned, I'll state some of the numbers. There's 54 violations that have been issued by the city by code enforcement to Sharp Circle and comparable to other, I've done my research, this is FYI. Done my research with a lot of the different parks and different things going on, code violations and stuff. And we have the, the most, which is an excessive amount of violations in Sharp Circle that any park has ever had in the same amount of years, ever, in the history of the state of Florida. Fifty-three of those 54 violations, Hansel Rodriguez has come to, come to code. He has, has matched or has taken care of those violations. The 54th one, the last one, is the, the roads. And I understand there's litigation going on with the fines and everything and you all can't speak on things, but the road violation or the vote, the road violation, yeah, the code violation for the roads is not actually in litigation. And we've been made aware that he has been sending emails, several emails, several phone calls to Eric Martin. I believe that emails have been sent to Tom. I received an email and I actually personally forwarded it to the commission board so that I'm sure you all have already been made aware of it. My frustration is, at the beginning of all of this, we felt like you all were behind us. We felt like you guys were supporting. I'm gonna get emotional. This is my home. And every day I see Eric Martin in my park when I'm having coffee at 8:00 or 8:30 in the morning. And I see him drive by and I see him ride by and I see them taking pictures and videos and everything. And I don't understand why it is now that I've been informed and I found out that all these requests of being, having an inspection redone that we have sent or Sharp Circle has sent to the commission board to Eric Martin and has been denied. It has been ignored. We have proof of the emails. We have proof of the requests. We have proof of the phone calls. And I wanna know why it is that the board members, who I believe Eric Martin has to answer directly to the city, Eustis Chief of Police, as well as you. So I'm just curious as to the reason why it is that since all this has happened, the main person that wants to buy, and I know my time's about to run out, but the main person that wants to buy the property, which is Daniel DeBianzo, I believe it is, which is the man that owns Eustis Waterfront Grill, who I've been actually informed by several different people, is also a personal friend of yours, Tom, Mr. Carino. I don't know what the, what's going on, but we have made it very clear that we want that park to stay and you all said that you were gonna do everything that you could. When you walked the park with us, Mr. Mayor, when we spoke to you all here in several different code enforcement meetings or several different, you know, commission board meetings, and you all said that you had our support, that you were supporting us and you wanted to make sure that we didn't lose our homes. But by trying to go to foreclosure on this park and not trying to be willing to negotiate with this man who has now shown proof that he is trying to, and he has cleaned up 53 of the 54 violations, it is beyond my understanding why it is that you all wanna take this place away.
Amy, I'm gonna shut you off because you're past your time. I would encourage you to get with our city attorney and really find out what you're talking about from our side of things before you go much further.
I've got all the public records. I've got all the information.
I would encourage you to sit down with the city attorney. Thank you. Tom?
That's it as far as cards.
Anybody else would like to address the commission about something that's not on the agenda? Not seeing any movement. We're gonna move right on down to the consent agenda. There are two items on the consent agenda tonight. Anything anybody want pulled for discussion? Not hearing anything. Looking for a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
I say.
Got a first and a second. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Aye.
Commissioner Cobb?
Aye.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Aye. Madam Attorney?
We'll start with Resolution Number 23-79. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Eustis, Lake County, Florida, approving the First Amendment to the Educational Development Agreement between the City of Eustis and Lake Sumter State College Foundation, Inc., and the District Board of Trustees of Lake Sumter State College concerning the conveyance of a four-acre parcel of city-owned property to build a commercial driver's license and utility line worker training facility. Authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary documents associated herewith and providing for an effective date. Mr. Latimer?
Thank you, Al Latimer, Economic Development Director. Commissioner, subsequent to the original agreement with the college, Lake Sumter State College donating the land for the CDL Training Center and the Line Worker Training Center, the college is asking you to consider amendment. And the, there are six major provisions to that amendment. I will quickly go over them. The first one is that the college will, in writing, ask for or request the city's approval if there is an alternative educational use being considered by the college. The second one is, is really a technical request indicating a, that the college put certain things in certified mail. The third one is that the college is asking for an extension of the closing date to the property, but no later than September 21st of 2023. The next one is that the property be conveyed to the college and not the college's foundation. The fifth one is that the college will not transfer the property without written approval of the city. And then the last one is that if the college fails to comply with any provisions of the contract, then the city will, you know, the property will revert to the city. Those are the provisions they're asking you to consider as part of the amendment. Staff recommends approval. Commissioner, what is your, what is your desire?
What was that last one, Al?
And the one before.
Okay, so number, let me read them. Number five, the college will convey, excuse me, will not convey, sell, or otherwise transfer its interest in the property for any purpose without written approval of the city. Additionally, the reversionary language now includes this express restriction to be included in the deed. The last one is the property reverts to the city if Lake Sumter State College fails to comply with the terms and provisions of the agreement.
I think I'd like to see that before it's reverted to anyone, the city, they reach out to the city to see if we want it back. My concern is a...
That's the last one for the fair.
Okay, that was the last one.
That's the last one.
Okay, okay.
The one before is kinda confusing.
Yeah.
Actually, it's probably one of the best-written agreements I've ever seen brought before us.
It is.
I've gone through it. I've looked at it with an attorney and it is very sound. And I wanna thank Al for working hard on it. And also, Dr. Begard, you and your staff have done a tremendous job and welcome to the Eustis City Commission tonight. So thank you for all you're doing out at Lake Sumter.
I think it's the first time we've had one make it very clear it reverses back to us.
Okay.
And, and both Sasha and the attorney for Lake Sumter State College have done a lot of work on this as well.
Does the commission have any further questions for?
Actually, I, I do have one. And coming from a financing standpoint, what about using the property as collateral for financing? Does the amendment prohibit that? But that's more of a question for Sasha, but no, it does not.
It does not. We can, there's language in there to allow the college to obtain funding and grants and they just have to abide by that. So that's, it's all in there. Anything further? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on Resolution Number 23-79? Seeing none, Mr. Mayor?
Commissioners, before us, we have Resolution 23-79. What's the will of our commission?
So moved.
Thank you. Have a first and a second. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. Roll call.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Aye.
Commissioner Cobb?
Aye.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lee?
I'm happy, yes.
Mayor Holland?
Aye. Thank you so much. Dr. Begard, congratulations. We look forward to our relationship and working with you all. Thank you.
Very excited.
Is it, is it, I'm sorry, is it possible to just delay for a few minutes, 6.2 and 6.3?
Of course. That means we have...
I'm sorry, 6.1 and 6.2. Sorry.
So we would start then with Ordinance Number 23-22 on second reading. This is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Eustis, Lake County, Florida, approving a conditional use permit for an accessory dwelling unit to an existing single-family residence in the rural residential RR Future Land Use District on approximately one acre located at 34534 Estes Road, alternate key number 1461600. Do we have any further presentation on that, Mr. Richardson? Does the commission have any questions for Mr. Richardson on this item? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on Ordinance Number 23-22? Seeing none, public comment is closed. Mr. Mayor?
Commissioners, before us, we have Ordinance Number 23-22. What's the will of our commission?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Have a first and a second. Any further discussion? Not hearing any. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Aye.
Commissioner Cobb? Commissioner Hawkins?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Aye.
Keep going. All right, for our first readings, we have Ordinance Number 23-15. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Eustis, Florida, voluntarily annexing approximately 4.63 acres of real property at alternate key number 1213177, generally located at the northeast corner of County Road 44 at the intersection of South Camp, South Fish Camp Road. Mr. Richardson?
For the record, Jeff Richardson, Deputy Director for Development Services. This is the public hearing for ordinances 2315, 2316, and 2317 for the annexation, future land use assignment, and design district assignment for property at 44 and Fish Camp Road. Property owners are Richard and Cindy Eichelberger. The applicants are Novak &amp; Sons. The parcel is approximately 4.63 acres in size. It is directly, obviously, adjacent to the current municipal boundary. The request is for a mixed commercial residential future land use and a suburban corridor design district. As you can see, the property is basically squaring off at Fish Camp Road where the property are, where the current municipal boundaries are, with 711 to the south and the Dollar General properties to the east. The annexation has been reviewed in light of the joint planning area agreement with Lake County. Florida statutes for voluntary annexation, the site is contiguous. Notice has been provided to the county. Proper notification has been provided within a newspaper of local circulation. And it is actually, comes down to being a logical extension of the city boundaries as well as the future land use that is, and design district, design districts that have been required. Future land use has been reviewed in accordance with Chapter 163 of the Florida statutes, the future land use element of the city's comprehensive plan, and Chapter 102 of the city's land development regulations. The current future land use on the property is Lake County Urban Low, which allows up to four dwelling units per acre. Primarily single-family is the intent, but it does allow for limited commercial uses as well. The city's mixed commercial residential future land use district will allow up to 12 dwelling units per acre. Will allow for single-family, for office, commercial. Its intent is as a mixed-use district overall. In reviewing the future land use request, it is consistent with the surrounding city future land uses to the east and to the south are currently mixed commercial residential land uses. The MCR designation therefore is compatible and a logical extension. Public services and facilities, facilities and capacity are available for water and utilities in the area. Natural resources, the property is currently cleared. It is filled with a small stand of trees. There are no wetland, or no wetlands on the property and no flood plain on the property. And it is also not within the Wakava Study area. Transportation, the level of services should be accommodating on both Fish Camp Road and County Road 44. Water supply, capacity is available. Showing general location of the lines are available on 44 going up. Water is also available going up Fish Camp Road. Sewer should be available also to the area, I believe. And environmental, it's not in the Wakava Study area. As you can see, the property has been previously cleared. And it is not subject to any flood areas. The two flood areas closest are actually the two retention ponds that are in the subdivision on the west side of Fish Camp Road. Subdivisions, sorry. Where am I at? Oh, the recharge areas. Recharge, it actually has two recharges, 4.8 acre, or 4.8, 4 to 8 inches in a small portion of the property and the remainder of the property is 8 to 12 inches per year. So basically, it's a low to moderate recharge rate. Sands are entirely lake sands for the entire property. They are well, or well-to-excessively drained soils. As you can see, just to show the municipal boundaries, it's currently adjacent, currently in extension, basically squaring off at, again, Fish Camp Road. Design district requested is suburban corridor. That is what the property is to, directly to the east and directly to the south are also assigned. The notice for the annexation was sent to the county via certified mail on August 10th. Newspaper advertisements were run on the 24th and the 31st of this month, or sorry, of last month, of August. And mailings were sent out also on the 21st. Actually, they may have been sent out on the 20th, but let's keep it as the 21st. And signs were posted on August 22nd. I verified, free my own photos. Staff is recommending approval for ordinances 2315, 2316, and 2317 for the annexation, future land use, and design district assignment for the property at Fish Camp Road. I'm available for any questions if you have anything for me.
Any questions for Mr. Richardson from the commission? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on Ordinance Number 23-15? Please come up, state your name and address.
For the record, this is Ryan Solstice, 1162 Camp Avenue with LPG Urban and Regional Planners on behalf of the applicant, Novak &amp; Sons, Inc. I'll be happy to answer any questions. I do have the conceptual plan. We did meet with Seth Lynch over at Lake County Public Works and we are on South Fish Camp Road, going to dedicate 21 feet of right-of-way to improve that intersection. And then on County Road 44, we're also gonna dedicate another 16 feet of right-of-way. What is being proposed here is outdoor sales of sheds as well as indoor and RV boat storage. The indoor storage is on the perimeter of the property. The boat storage is on the interior.
Thank you.
Where's the access gonna be?
So the access at this time is off of South Fish Camp Road. Let me present the conceptual plan here. So through our discussions with Seth Lynch over at Lake County Public Works, the desire here was not to access County Road 44 due to the Dollar General having a right-in and a right-out and left-out. So... So too further to the east, once the property in between this one is developed, there'll be a local road that connects to the Dollar General with their entrance for the right-in, right-out, and then off of South Fish Camp, which has access to that signalized intersection.
And to the resident that's living up there on the, the upper left?
Correct, so we're going to provide.
What kind of buffer are you?
We're providing a ten-foot buffer with a six-foot fence there.
Is it, is it going all the way to the back of the property or just?
Correct, it's on that L shape surrounding them is where we're providing that.
Anything further from the commission? Anyone else in the audience that would like to comment on ordinance twenty-three fifteen? Seeing none, Mr. Mayor?
Commissioners, before us, we have ordinance number twenty-three dash fifteen. What's the will of our commission?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Have a first and a second. Any further discussion? Not hearing any, roll call, please.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Aye.
Commissioner Cobb?
Aye.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Aye.
Next is ordinance number twenty-three dash sixteen. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Eustis Lake County, Florida, amending the City of Eustis Comprehensive Plan pursuant to Florida Statute one sixty-three point three one eight seven, changing the future land use designation of approximately four point six three acres of real property at alternate key number one two one three one seven seven, generally located at northeast corner of County Road forty-four at the intersection of South Fish Camp Road from Urban Low in Lake County to mixed commercial residential in the City of Eustis. We've already had presentation. Is there any question from the commission for Mr. Richardson? Anyone in the audience wishing to speak on ordinance number twenty-three dash sixteen? Okay, seeing none, no close public comment on this. Mr. Mayor?
Commissioners, before us, we have ordinance number twenty-three dash sixteen. What's the will of our commission?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion? Not hearing any, roll call, please.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Aye.
Commissioner Cobb?
Aye.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Aye.
And the last component here is ordinance number twenty-three dash seventeen. An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Eustis Lake County, Florida, assigning the suburban corridor design district designation to approximately four point sixty-three acres of recently annexed real property at alternate key number one two one three one seven seven, generally located at the northeast corner of County Road forty-four at the intersection of South Fish Camp Road. We've had presentation. Any questions from the commission for Mr. Richardson? Any members in the public wishing to speak on ordinance twenty-three dash seventeen? Seeing none, public input is closed. Mr. Mayor?
Commissioners, before us, we have ordinance number twenty-three dash seventeen. What's the will of our commission?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you both so much. Any further discussion? Not hearing any, roll call.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Aye.
Commissioner Cobb?
Aye.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Aye.
Now we have resolution number twenty-three dash seventy-five. A resolution by the City Commission of the City of Eustis Lake County, Florida, adopting the tentative millage levy of ad valorem taxes for the City of Eustis Lake County for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four, providing for an effective date. Mr. Shepherd?
Mayor, members of the council, commission, Mike Shepherd, Finance Director. Today, we're going to have the first of two readings for the tentative millage rate and the tentative budget, followed next meeting by the final. These are the dates that we're going to be working with. We're going to have the newspaper ad coming out on the eighteenth. September twenty-first will be the final reading. September twenty-eighth, we'll have the final millage rate certification. And then we'll be sending that all off to the state for their certifications. After that, when you look at your budget books, this is the format it's going to be looking at for the summary. This is the general fund, and it'll have the two-years actual. You'll have the adopted for twenty-two, twenty-three, anything that was projected beyond that that was amended, and then the proposed twenty-three, twenty-four. So that's how all the budgets will look at that, if you're going into the budget book. These are some of the, the items that we talked about during the workshops that we did. The health insurance went up six point seven five, but it's better than, I think the seven something was the next best one that we could have got. So we stuck with the same one. The coal, we're going to go with a coal of five percent, and we're going to add one thousand dollars for everybody else. So whatever that computes to for each, the lower ones will get a much bigger percentage, the higher ones will have a lesser percentage. But everybody will be above fifteen dollar, fifteen dollars an hour, once we get there. See, state, state of Florida has given us the estimated revenues on a lot of their shared revenues that they send to the city. The insurance increase we had this year for property workers' concept was eight point five nine percent. There's a little bit of excess in the, in the budget, and I think we might want to leave that in there just in case something comes up where we have maybe a storm that we have to cover. So that won't hurt us any. Excuse me. The fire pension amount decreased by point seven, and the police pension went up by point eight six. Those are the contributions, increase and decrease, that we'll experience this year. Public Works has multiple promotions and new, and new positions in their budget. Fire Department will have a new position. Finance is preparing for a transition of the Finance Director. I didn't hear about that one.
Very funny.
And then, like I said before, the fifteen-dollar minimum will go into effect. This is the budget overview for the operating accounts for those general fund, capital, special revenue, enterprise funds, and then trust and agency. Trust and agency has the police and fire pensions in there and a few others. The special revenue has some of the impact fees in there. The community redevelopment fund and so forth. And then the capital projects fund is the sales tax revenue fund. We get the one penny sales tax that we split three ways between the county, the city, and the school board. This is a portrait of the total revenues that the city receives. Charges for services is the highest, which includes the water and sewer revenues that we receive. The next biggest one you'll, you'll notice is ad valorem at eleven million. That comes over, the next, the one on the right will show you what the breakdown of the revenues are for the, the general fund. And as you can see, the ad valorem tax is a huge estimate of what we're going to be receiving for the year. And we'll talk about that later as we get, get going. This is the same thing for expenditures for the entire city. And then the one with the dollar in there shows the expenditures for the general fund. And you'll notice that public safety is the biggest expenditure that we have for the general fund. This, this is the CRA that Mr. Latimer talked about earlier. And the ending fund balance is estimated to be one point three four seven. So we do have money, if, if another project does come up, we have money to deal with. This is a proposed millage rate. We're proposing seven five eight one, which is the same as it was last year. The total amount that we are budgeting for, where the tax levy would be about ten million two thirteen, we, we do is give a five percent reduction because people who pay early get a reduction. So we, we count on, we, we don't count on getting the total amount. But then, if you go down to the twenty-three, twenty-four proposed, it is, that was twenty-two, twenty-three. This is twenty, the bottom one is twenty-three, twenty-four. And so there's about a million dollars more that we're going to get this year from the assessed values. The, and the maximum rate shows up there, what it would be for, for twenty-three, twenty-four at eight point oh six. We're not even remotely recommending that one. And the rollback rate would be ten oh nine. And that's, that's going to be almost. No, that, that's not right. That one, I'll have to get back to you on that one. This is how the, for a home that's valued at two hundred thousand, they get a fifty dollar, fifty thousand dollar exemption from the property appraiser. That brings their value down to a hundred and fifty thousand. You divide that by one thousand. You get a hundred and fifty, and then the millage rate of seven point five eight one, multiply that, and that gives you the, the, the taxes that that property would have. If you go to the millage rate, there's a, you do the same calculation, and it's one, one thousand and fifty-two dollars. The eighty-five dollars is about seven oh eight a month, and the rollback rate, they save money, maybe a cup of coffee a month. The, but the, the reduction in revenues to the city, general fund in particular, is significant and makes a big difference. This is just a presentation of how that works. And the bottom one, if, if you, if we did have an ad valorem tax plus a non-ad valorem tax, like a fire assessment fee, then that would be your annual taxes. What we do next, I think, is, no, not yet. These, this is a breakdown of the, the one million four twenty-four difference in the rollback rate and what, how it would affect the, the general fund. This shows you the ad valorem ranking. Strictly ad valorem speaking, the City of Eustis is number fourteen out of fourteen. But when you, next one will show, these are for the major cities up here in the north end, similar to us. When you add in things such as the transfers that we do from the water and sewer fund, and their fire assessment fees, ours is the lowest. All right, that's what we're calling the functional millage rate. And it's, it's, those, Leesburg has water and sewer, they have electric, they have garbage.
Yes.
They get the transfer from those enterprise funds into their general fund to help them. And they also have a fire assessment fee, which pays for their fire department. And the rest of them doing the same thing. We're, we transfer the least amount, two million three, from our water and sewer, which I think is legitimate because it covers the cost of admin, like city manager, economic development, finance, HR, planning and development. All those items, water and sewer company doesn't have to do that. The city does that, so we transfer some, most of those are those costs that they get associated with.
If I could a little bit, just kind of explain what's going on there. I think our philosophy has been transparency in taxation. And what this shows basically is we are not artificially deflating our tax rate by overcharging our utility customers, nor are we artificially keeping our tax rate low by charging people for things like fire service separately. And so again, we try to be transparent. What that has resulted in is we are the highest millage rate in the county, but we feel that that's the case because we're being transparent, and you are, you're getting fire service with your taxes. You're getting police service with your taxes, and we are, at the same time, we are also keeping your utility rates reasonable and not using that utility money to subsidize the general fund. And so, again, when you factor that in, we are the lowest transfer from utilities, and we don't charge a fire assessment, and when you factor all of that in, we are the lowest millage of the triangle in Leesburg. And so we, we think that's important. Again, when the public looks at tax rates and says, look at Eustis, highest in the county, there's a reason for that, and that's because we're being transparent.
Thank you.
Any questions for the commission?
Well, we've got a few more slides.
Just a few more. This is, this is a progression of how we've, of our taxable values that we've received over the last ten years. And it's gone from seven million, seven billion five nine to one billion four ninety-nine over a ten-year period. So we are growing, and we hope that trend continues. There was a dip there before that, when we had the, the housing, okay, we won't talk about that. This shows the per capita. We have twenty-four thousand one one five. We spend twenty-one million. And the nine oh seven is there. So we're number one in that. When we spend per capita, we're spending the lowest amount of money. This one here, the per capita is the same for expenditures. It's, you know, so the city overall is doing very well, I believe. And I think those, these last few ones help represent that, plus the functional millage rate when you talk about that.
Yeah, so Mike, if you could go back just briefly. Just the, the final slide, number eighteen.
Number eighteen?
Yep, eighteen. Again, Mike mentioned this, but I just want to point out that we are, in effect, we're, we're running pretty lean. We're being responsible to the taxpayer. We are spending less per capita than any of the other cities in the triangle. And I, I think what that mean, I mean, we have, in my opinion, is we offer phenomenal services. We have the best team in the area. But we're doing it for less. We're doing it at the least amount per capita in the triangle in Leesburg. And so I want to, I want to thank our team. You know, they're committed, they're offering great services to the public, and we're doing it at a really reasonable cost and being responsible to the taxpayer. So I just wanted to point that out before we move forward to consideration.
Thank you.
Questions?
No questions? Okay. Anyone in the audience wishing to comment on resolution number twenty-three dash seventy-five? Seeing none, Mr. Mayor?
Commissioners, before us, we have resolution twenty-three dash seventy-five. What's the will of our commission?
Well, may I, may I say one thing?
Go ahead.
Before you do that, we're, we're proposing the millage rate is seven eight five one, and the rollback rate is nine point three percent less than the, the millage that we're proposing. Rollback rate is seven zero point zero one five eight, and it's nine point three percent higher than the rate we're proposing.
We, based on state law, we have to advertise it as a tax increase. But we are keeping the rate steady, and we have for the last nine years. Yeah.
What's the will of our commission?
So moved. Second.
First and a second. Any further discussion? Not hearing any, roll call, please.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Aye.
Commissioner Cobb?
Aye.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Aye.
Next is resolution number twenty-three dash seventy-six. A resolution by the City Commission of the City of Eustis Lake County, Florida, adopting the tentative budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three dash twenty twenty-four, providing for an effective date. Mr. Shepherd?
This is for the tentative budget, first reading. The, just a couple of notes. The surplus in the general fund is going to be about four hundred and thirty-one thousand, almost four hundred and thirty-two thousand. There are some funds in there that the current year is spending more than the revenue that's derived. Some of those are the, like the water and sewer root renewal and replacement fund. That's meant to get the money in and then spend it out. Okay, and there's, and money in the, in the fund balance, so, you know, it can go, it can go to negative expenditures for the year. Same thing with the sales tax revenue fund. We get that money in. We, we want to spend that. So it could, it takes sometimes more money than we get over the one year, but over the course of the time, we have extra money. So that's just a little note there that I'd like to bring out. Again, this, the budget's predicated on the seven five eight one millage rate. Any other questions?
Any questions from the commission? Anyone in the public wishing to comment on this resolution? Seeing none, Mr. Mayor?
Commissioners, before us, we have resolution twenty-three dash seventy-six. What's the will of our commission?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Not hearing any, roll call, please.
Commissioner Ashcraft?
Aye.
Commissioner Cobb?
Aye.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Mayor Holland?
Aye. Mike, thank you. Mike, thank you. And for anybody out there that is interested, City Commission went line by line through these, all of these books over the last couple of months. So when you see us go through this very quickly, it's not that we haven't looked at it. We sat in here for hours going over this budget, trying to make the best decisions that we can for the residents of the city. Mike, I know this is probably your last budget presentation. You have the twenty-first of September with us. But thank you for all that you've done for the city of Eustis in your time period.
I have, the last four years have been fun, and I enjoy the camaraderie that the people in the city have and the commission. And again, I was going to thank you all for your participation in the budget workshops, because that makes this process at the end very easy.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
All right, thank you, Madam Attorney. Other business, anybody have anything else? Tom, anything else you need to share with us? Let's go to future agenda items and reports. Let's start off with the vice mayor tonight. I usually put you last, but...
That's because I don't have anything.
We're in good shape tonight.
That's good.
Willie?
Oh, well.
I know you've got plenty.
He's always got something.
Well, of course, as I said at the, the last commission meeting, you'll probably hear this for the next two or three. Panther Pride in the Park, October twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. This is going to benefit the boosters, our kids in sports at Eustis High School. I wish everyone would come out, participate, donate, buy dinner ticket. Thomas McClary, Tanya Wilder, Cynthia Shard, Jazz Band. It's going to be a great event, right on the lake, so please come out. If you haven't purchased a ticket, do so before they go up. Oh, it may be too late, so, sorry.
Before you move on, Willie and I, and Tom, and several of us got to go to a breakfast at the high school a couple of weeks ago. We got to tour some of the sporting facilities up there. Eustis is building championship programs, and I'm very proud of that, back especially being a graduate of Eustis High School. When I walked into the weight room at Eustis High School, I was utterly, I was shocked and dismayed by what I saw. The high school, when I was at Eustis High School, the weight room was bigger. I swear to you that I think some of the equipment was back from that time that I was at Eustis High School. We're, we're too good of a community to allow our kids to work with subpar equipment and in a building that is not up to date. And you can no way, there's no way that, we're not even having weightlifting classes anymore because our sports teams are, are taking up all the space. We, competition-wise, you can't get in there to view a competition. You have to watch it through a glass window because there's just no room. It's half the size of this commission chamber. We really, if, if you cannot be there to this Panther Pride in the Park, make a donation to Eustis High School, make a donation to the future of our community. Sorry, Willie.
No, no, I appreciate that. If, if you need a visual of what our kids, you know, have to put up with, go on Netflix, turn on the TV, look up the worst prison gym that you can find.
Absolutely.
And that's what you'll find. I, you know, I, I walked in and I, I couldn't believe it. I wasn't expecting what I saw, so please consider being a part of this. Comedy show coming up. We're thinking at least twenty-five to thirty thousand, just for the, just for the weight room. But our goal is higher than that because we want to support, you know, all the sports. So if you're willing to write a check right now.
Checkbooks at home.
The comedy show, I guess I'll go ahead and do it. Eighth anniversary comedy show.
Darius, oh, that's you.
We've got Darius.
Darius, come on up, please.
You can sell it better than we can.
Exactly.
Keep it quick, though, because I'm hungry.
He's getting hangry. He's angry, Darius.
Um, this Saturday, downtown Fairham Park, it is the House Alat the eight year anniversary. I want to thank Mr. Craig and all the city of Eustis just for partnering with me, making these events so successful. Event started four-thirty, we'll probably be here in about eight, eight-thirty. Come on out, be vendors, some of the best comedy from all over the United States. We got a fashion show before that, so y'all come on out, man, have a good time. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, thank you. You know, it, it, it is, it's always a great time. And I want to thank Commissioner Ashcraft. He actually reached out to someone that, that gave us a hefty check, and I just wanted to personally, myself, say, say thank you.
You're welcome.
And last but not least, I won't be here at the next commission meeting. And I know that the...
Praise God.
But I will call in. You know, I, I, I won't be here, and I'm, I think that the, that we should have a discussion. And even though I won't be here, I want to be part of that discussion. Tom has been our city manager for almost two years. He's done an amazing job. You know, he came in, and, you know, I, I had, I had some concerns. He and I have, have had these conversations, and, you know, he, he came in and, you know, he hit the ground running. I know that, that, you know, we, we agreed on a salary for him. And I think that, you know, if the topic comes up for a raise, I want it to be on record that, that I believe that, that he should be compensated for what he's done. You know, he's, he's led this city, he's focused, he's smart, you know, he doesn't forget anything, unfortunately. And, you know, I, I, I just think that, that we should, we should compensate him for what he does. I, I think that there may have been a couple of years where he didn't receive any compensation, you know, as other people in the city did. So I think that we should, well, at least on my end, I think we should think about it.
And I would ask that each commissioner reach out to Bill Howe with HR and have a discussion with Bill of what you think that might look like. And then we can bring it back, I think probably at the twenty-first, if that's okay with you, Bill. Okay? Thank you, Willie. Anything else?
Nope, I am...
You're going to be last now.
No, no, it's just one thing.
All right, go ahead.
I just wanted to thank Pastor King because not only was the fellowship good, but the food was delicious. Excellent. He really did a nice community outreach, and I, I wish there were more of those. And, and I encourage him to continue doing it because lately, he's probably the only one who's doing that. And I really would like him to continue it, and whatever we could do to be a part of it, we definitely will. And so I, I really appreciate that. And I concur with what you said about Tom, and I think we're all going to make an effort to make it happen. Thank you.
Karen?
Yeah, a couple, couple of things real, real quick. I'd like to see us have a discussion on what, what and how we are using our, our reserve funds in investing. I've had a conversation with Tom. I think our, our money should be making us money. And I'm not sure where it, where it is now, but I think we really need to look at, at using, using all those funds that we have to try to make us more money that we, that we can. And then secondly, after the hearing with Hidden Cove, I continue to still get calls and emails about, about development within the city. And listening to the residents, I think it's not the, it's not the development per se, it's the density of our developments. So I think it might be prudent for us to take a look at some of our land development regulations somehow. Let's see if there's ways we can try to reduce some of the densities that these developers are asking. That's all.
I, I would agree with you. I think it's way past us time to take another look back at that, and we do need to tap our brakes. But we just need to, development is coming, but we need to do it carefully there. So, Commissioner Cobb?
Thank you, Mayor. On that note, I've already reached out to Mike Lane. And, you know, we have the, you know, up to five, if you will, up to five DU per acre, okay? And that's our suburban residential. So what I did reach out to Mike and I said, I asked, what I'd ask him to do was, so let's look at the, our other large cities that, you know, we do our comparisons with, and find out what their, what up their five, what their suburban residential, if, are they up to five? And what their densities are, you know, and what they look like. And then I also asked him to look at our lot size. So right now, the just standard lot size for suburban residential is fifty-five by one-twenty. So I said, I had him run me some numbers on, you know, sixty by one-twenty, sixty-five by, you know, one-twenty, maybe seventy by thirty, just to get some comparisons to see how much land they would lose, you know, how many houses, you know, the, the decrease of house. And so, you know, we look at that, so we're, he's, he's, he came up with some things for me, but we're still working on a few things. So, you know, instead of, because in order, like you said, Gary, in order to create these, like a different one or something like that, it's a long time. This isn't a fast process at all. But an amendment to one, somebody can do quicker. Okay? So I thought that was something for us to look at, and maybe we, you know, as soon as we get all the numbers on what we're looking at kind of solidified. And if you have any questions for Mike, maybe he can do something as well, but maybe he can do a presentation to us. Okay? So Mike's been working very, very hard on that for me. Also, too, I contacted Nancy Dodd with Duke Energy. She and I met probably a year ago to talk about the lighting down Bay Street and some of the deficiencies that we're having. So it, like anything else, I don't know what happened, but at the bottom line, anyway, I talked to her today, and she got ahold of the lighting specialist, if you will. And he is wanting us to work in conjunction, I talked to Captain Toler tonight, work in conjunction with the police department on what lights are out, get the poll numbers. And for me, it's, yes, we do have lights that come out. That is, the police department take care of that already. Sometimes it just happens two, three at one time. My biggest thing was the crooked poles, the poles that need to be removed, the poles that need to be replaced. And we need some attention, we need some TLC. So she reached out to them, again, to talk to me, and so I had the conversation with Captain Toler. So we are going to be working on the whole pole situation, the sawed-off wooden poles. We're waiting on, in case you see sawed-off old wooden poles, Duke has got their stuff off of it. We're waiting on other agencies like Comcast or any agency like that to remove their equipment, whatever. And then Duke comes by and removes the old wooden pole. So they're working on that as well. Where are we? I know that we had talked, I had asked about the alternate key numbers out east and the property out east. I just want to make sure we're going through that. Sasha, you know, we had, you know, the property out east, but then they had the alternate key across the street. That was a long time ago when the road hadn't blown through.
Right.
They just kind of fell through the cracks?
I did, so I talked to Rick about it, and we also brought Mike Brison into the conversation. Mike Brison is, is, I mean, he's very good with legal descriptions. He's basically a surveyor that's not a certified surveyor. And so he's very good, and he's looking into it. We are going to get that corrected, and then we probably need to work with Development Services and Lake County Property Appraiser to actually do, to amend the lines.
You're going to have to amend those alternate key numbers, you know, to add what's already on that, that south side.
Yeah, so we're, we're, it's on our radar.
Okay.
We're working on it, but yeah, we're, we're taking a look and we'll get it figured out.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And just, we had a busy, not this past weekend, but the weekend before, because we had like three times, three Thursdays off. It was amazing. We went to the August Fest again with Pastor King and his group, and it was just a great time. The ribs were outstanding, and we just had a fun time of fellowship and, and it was fun. We also had the bear trash can, you know, when we rigged some trash cans up. Greg Dobbins was out there with us, and just trying to bear-proof some of the trash cans in some of the areas that, you know, they're pretty active. And also, too, we attended the Eustis Junior Panthers game here in Eustis. They're really trying, they didn't really have a good, successful day, but the kids try very hard. They tried their hardest, they did their best, and they represented Eustis well. So I am very proud of them, I'm just proud of our community. We had a good day that day, so that's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much. Tom?
Um, just, just a couple of items. One, I, I, related to the bear event, I do want to thank Commissioner Hawkins, but I also want to thank Fish and Wildlife because they were very involved. They brought staff and contractors to town, were very accommodating. I apologize in that I did not make it over to Pastor King's event because we were, we were busy with bear-proofing cans. So I apologize for not making it over, but we were busy that day, and, and we got a lot of good stuff done. And so I want to thank Fish and Wildlife. And the, Mayor, you've already kind of mentioned this, related to budget, but I, I want to thank everybody for their involvement in that process. Really want to thank commission for all of their time and dedication. I want to thank staff because we had, I think we did four workshops, probably a combined twenty hours or so over the course of those four workshops. And really, I, I thought the, the residents of Eustis really were well-served by the city commission and the staff working through and, and making sure that we put together a budget that we can all be proud of. So I wanted to thank everybody for their time and involvement in that, and that's it.
All right, Madam Attorney?
Nothing to report.
Nothing to report. That's always a good thing from you.
Yes.
Oh, I just remembered something. Uh-oh, I'm just kidding. I knew you were angry.
We go get rid of her.
But I did, I did.
What?
I just wanted to remind you about the nine eleven event.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
We got, again, we had a full week last week, and we've got an even fuller week coming up. But on Sunday, let me do, Monday is nine eleven. There is a ser, a service at the, in front of the historical courthouse in Taveries at eight-thirty in the morning. The community is invited, we'd love to have you there. Members of our commission will be there, our fire department will be present, our police department will be present. Just a good time to get together and remember those events. I try to forget those events because I'd rather remember the way we were the day after. And we need to get back to that as a country, so we've got that. Eustis plays Taveries tomorrow night in Taveries. Go Panthers, let's take them on and beat them. So we also, a couple of things that I'd like to ask the commission for. You were given a review for Tom. You do not have to fill that out. I would like to get a few in, in case we're ever audited that we do have it. I know we have sat down privately with Tom and with, with Bill and gone over a review process. But if you would mind sending it in, I'm going to send mine in. We just have something for public record. You do not have to, but I'm just asking if you would like to, please do it. We also have one for the city attorney. Since Sasha is new with us, we would like to go ahead and review her as well. So if you would get those into Bill, preferably by Wednesday of next week, so it'll go on to the next agenda that we have for the twenty-first, if you would please do that. Then one of the other things I'd like to ask the commission, we, the month of December, our commission meetings, the way they're set up, I would like to move us to one commission meeting for the month of December, and make that maybe December the fourteenth. Falls right in the middle of the month. And I think we can accomplish everything that we need to do to close out the year. And then Tom goes on vacation right after that meeting. So if that is agreeable, Gary, you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah, yes, that's my...
Vice Mayor? Willie, you good with it?
Yes.
Nan, you good?
Yes, sir.
So Christine, if we can go ahead and make those plans as well. Again, thank everybody for being here tonight. Congratulations to Lake Sumter State College, we're looking forward to our partnership there. And again, very proud of this commission. We agree and we disagree up here, but at the end of the day, once the decision's made, we move forward for the betterment of our community. we move forward for the betterment of our community. What?
The mayor's birthday is the sixteenth.
Shh. We don't celebrate him anymore. Thank you all for being here tonight. We're dismissed.